Good evening, everyone, and thank you. Today is October 30th, 2024. This is a special session, a joint session of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, as well as the Board of Public Utilities Board that is here with us today, as well as some administrative and executive staff from their respective bodies. Before I call the meeting to order, I want to announce that we have individuals attending remotely as well as onsite. All participants joining by phone should please mute your phones at this time, and this is done to avoid any background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak, so the public that is participating knows exactly who is speaking. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and its current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General's Office. Please make sure that when you do speak, that you speak clearly into the microphones to ensure that your comments are heard and an accurate recording of your statements can be made by our clerk. I will now call this meeting to order, and clerk, can you announce the meeting and call us with the roll call?
Good evening. You're hereby notified that a special meeting of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, is scheduled to be conducted in a hybrid format on Wednesday, October 30th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. for a joint meeting with the Board of Public Utilities in the fifth-floor conference room of the Municipal Office Building, 701 North 7th Street, Kansas City, Kansas. Roll call. Burrows?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
Burns?
Here.
Ramirez?
Here.
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 Kane? Lopez?
Here.
Stites? Davis?
Here.
Beinam?
Your.
Garner?
Here.
Members of the BPU? Johnson?
Here.
Groneman?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Haley?
Present.
Parker?
Here.
Wakes?
Here.
Ms. Austin?
Present.
Here.
Thank you, clerk. And tonight, this is a joint meeting of the Board of Public Utilities, as well as your Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, leadership teams. I'd like to acknowledge and thank our guests, which is the Board of Public Utilities, for joining us tonight, and hopefully will be an ongoing consistent series of meetings to discuss issues that are most important, not just to the boards or the commission and the unified government, but more importantly, all the great people that love and call Wyandotte County home. I'd like to take this time to introduce the board chair, Mr. Groneman, and allow you to take the honor of introducing the membership team and your board.
Thank you, Mayor. I have on my left our general manager, Bill Johnson. On my right is Mary Gonzalez, Rosemary Henry, Mulvaney Henry, Brett Parker, Stevie Wakes, and David Haley. And our staff. Oh, yeah, we have our Lori Austin, who's our... Lori Austin, who's our chief financial officer.
Okay, thank you. And today, I know that we've been discussing a meeting, and I know we've met before, so this is a great opportunity for us to meet. Tonight's meeting, if you recall and go back, and I'll take us back just a little bit, because it wasn't that that long ago. On 8/29 of 24 of this year, Mr. Groneman and Mr. Johnson came and did a presentation about just an update to the commission and the public on BPU. A great presentation, good information that left all of us with the impression on the value that BPU is and has been, not just to the unified government, but to the great folks of Wyandotte County and all its customers. And it's a valued entity that we're proud to say, historically, if you go back, I believe it's to the 20s, since its inception, that has been a great asset for the people here in Kansas City, Kansas. Tonight's meeting is to really have a hard conversation about some of the concerns, and if you look at your agenda, which all of you should have, as well as some other handouts. We want to start having a conversation. Again, on 8/29, what was brought out was the information about BPU. There was a special meeting that occurred, as well as a meeting on 9/5 of 24 of this year, where Mr. Chris Steiniger spoke about some possibilities of cost savings that could be upwards of the millions, and recommended that the unified government take a hard look at that, if it would potentially save customers money, as well as an open-mic session for the public to come and speak about any concerns or any recommendations they may have regarding the BPU. Tonight is not about what we are against, this is about what we're for, which is excellence in service to our residents, showing them that collaborating on finding solutions can align us as true partners, committed to tackling longstanding concerns that a lot of residents said that are a top priority and issue for them. One thing that has been consistent for me has been, when I go around this community, and I'm out here every day, is the number-one things that our residents talk about, your property taxes, user fees, as well as their BPU bills. And I know that the commission has tried real hard, and I applaud our commission for taking the unprecedented step to go revenue-neutral, our administration to really start looking at how we can streamline our government and operate a little more efficiently on behalf of our residents, that also included taking the pilot contribution down from 11.9% to 10.9% in this budget, which this commission passed. But we need to find real solutions to real problems that we know impact the lives of real people every day. That's what's coming from the public. For me, it's always about putting people over position, power, privilege, and most importantly, over politics. This offers us an opportunity to prioritize, to partner, and promote progress for our residents, to deliver something of value for all of our stakeholders. We are not in competition. We are technically one and the same entity, operating in different lanes, with a shared goal of delivering quality, equitable, beneficial services to all our stakeholders. Let's be frank, we are the community, and the community is us. We would not exist without the amazing people that make up Wyandotte County. They vote leaders into office to create what should be beneficial policies of value for the community at large, and to bridge non-elected professionals into positions for the purpose of providing excellence in the delivery of good services and resources. As public servants, today I ask that we begin a lasting positive effort of commitment leveraging our leadership abilities, our knowledge, expertise, experience, and most importantly, our compassion for the people with concerns in our community, to be intentional and thoughtful in being transparent, inclusive, respectful, and results-driven, in what should be our never-ending quest to finding solutions or strategies that can meet the demands of residents and hopefully make life just a little bit better for those that love and call Wyandotte County home. As we navigate through finding what the problems are and facing the problems, and hopefully being able to find solutions that can fix the problems, we need to ask ourselves, is it reasonable? Is it responsible? Is it actionable? Is it sustainable? And ultimately, will it be of value to our residents? Solutions are always in abundance, and we must seize them, and now is that time, and this is that opportunity. The first step of engagement and collaboration offers us an enormous opportunity to deliver on a vision for shared success that will reflect positively on any realized accomplishments and the necessity of accountability our residents have been demanding, which, if we are intentional about putting the people first, has the potential to restore the public trust that can reinforce confidence in this unified government. Listening to residents with a commitment to deliver beneficial outcomes, I believe, is the baseline for us to start meeting and exceeding the reasonable and responsible expectations residents have for all of us. Instead of defending what we think we are, let us work on defining who we should be in our collective service to the great and amazing people who just want better, not just for themselves, but for them government and for the community that we all love. If you look at your agenda, some of the things that we'll be going through is the opening remarks, there's a presentation. If we can pull that presentation up, that would be the next thing. Clerk? I think that's the wrong slide. The alternate one.
Which presentation?
The other presentation, clerk, I'm sorry. That's it. Okay, thank you. Next slide. If you look at that, that is just kind of an overview of the thought that a lot of residents have given us. Next slide. This is talking about electric breaks and comparisons. This slide has some valued information. It does go back to 2022. I've got Mr. Chris Steiniger here with us, who's been volunteering to do some work on this. Chris, you want to elaborate on this slide that you brought forward?
Sure, thank you. Many years ago, when I was in the state legislature, I asked the Kansas Corporation Commission to, which the KCC is the official regulator of electric utilities in our state, except for municipally-owned utilities, but they regulate all the big for-profit utilities in our state. So many years ago, I asked these guys for a rate comparison, a mini, what I called a mini-rate study, and they provided that for me. This goes back 20 years ago, but, and it's an old document, so it's a bit outdated, but even in those days, BPU had a higher residential rates and commercial rates than did for-profit utilities such as Westar, or what's down under as Evergy used to be, the Kansas City Power and Light. And it always troubled me that the for-profits have to pay property taxes on all their buildings, all their equipment, all their trucks, and they also have to make a corporate profit for their shareholders, and BPU doesn't have to have any of those cost burdens. They don't pay property taxes. They do pay a pilot, or I should say, the citizens pay a pilot, and they don't exactly have to make a profit for shareholders. So why would their rates be higher? And that's always troubled me. But that was borne out in this original KCC research document from many years ago. More recently, the Kansas Policy Institute did a rate comparison, and that's what you're seeing here, the sources, the Kansas Policy Institute, which is a known think-tank based out of Wichita. And indeed, in this short study, a lot of BPU rates are higher than surrounding municipals and also for-profit utilities. So how can that be? If it's a nonprofit and doesn't have to pay property taxes, doesn't have to make a corporate profit, how can the rates be higher? So this needs to be explored, and that's it on the rate study.
Thank you. Next slide. That's it, okay. All right, thank you. That takes us to questions and concerns that have come before us. A variety of residents, dealing everything from customer service, the lobby being closed, again, to our rates, to pension solvability, our debt, how the debt became so massive over the years, outsourcing, what does it mean to our residents when we talk about the value of them, when you factor in land, I'm sorry, wind and solar energy, and what that really equates to as far as benefits to our residents? And these are just questions. And again, these are questions that are just being thrown out there and posed to the BPU for consideration. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Carrie McCarthy, who will continue the presentation with some questions, as well as hopefully some recommendations for consideration by both the commission, as well as the Board of Public Utilities. Ms. Carrie McCarthy?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, for inviting me to speak. Full transparency, I am a Kansas City, Kansas resident and a cost analyst, not a public speaker, and not a politician, so this is not my strong point, way out of my comfort zone. However, a lot of questions have been coming out of a Facebook group, and we've started compiling them, and we're about 1,500 strong now, and I keep hearing, is BPU a burden or a benefit? That question keeps coming up over and over, and I keep hearing overwhelmingly that right now it is a burden to the county. And I have to agree, I do. With the lobby not being open, people's power getting disconnected, no way to talk to customer service, they have receipts they paid, it is absolutely a burden, but this can be turned around so quickly into being a benefit for the county. Because very few counties have this opportunity, that already have this municipal utility that they are running, that's operating as a whole. I worked there, I know 95% of those people are good people. They want to keep your lights on, and they want to keep your water running. However, we do have some issues at the top, and that was absolutely made very, very clear with the pilot situation. We have listened relentlessly since August 1st about the BPU blaming the unified government for the lack of communication. They have not invited us to meetings. We did not see this coming. We were blindsided. I'll give you that. Yes, you were, as were we, but we were pleasantly blindsided, because we felt like people were actually in our corner for once. We actually had people in our corner that were trying to help us. Everybody got excited, October 1st. BPU made the decision, no, no, we can't do that. So as a cost analyst in the utilities, I know it costs money to run the utility. So I had to take a step back and say, okay, why can't they do it? What is holding them back? So I logged in to the budget presentation. Trust me, I do have better things to do in my spare time other than what I do for a living. But I logged on, and those are the questions that I have straight out of the August 2024 budget presentation, which was October 2nd. We have heard everything from all work would stop, to our credit rating would go from an A- to a D, and if the credit rating is true, we have bigger fish to fry. Really, we do. We have got to get our bond debt under control for the investors that bought those municipal bonds. This is outside of Wyandotte County. This affects a lot of people. They bought those bonds on an A-. We have to do everything we can to ensure that stays where it is. So in this, go to the next slide here. The back one. I just kind of want to describe a little bit to the county about days of cash on hand. So when the BPU refers to days of cash on hand, what they are referring to is how much money they have that they can operate the utility. How many days can we operate with the cash that we have? So it's their reserves, if something were to happen, God forbid, that they could operate the utility for a certain amount of days and keep the power and the lights on in the county. Kind of viewed as a savings account, if you will. We have savings accounts for our homes in case something goes horribly awry. In the budget presentation, I was extremely disappointed when I looked at this historical days' cash graph that showed a great, great increase in the month of August. So August 1st, what this looks like to the community is August 1st, you were told the residential pilot would be removed, and you immediately put $11.4 million into your reserves. That's a slap in the face to every member of this community. It really is. And it shows absolute non-transparency, and that's what needs to change, to make BPU more of a benefit. Everything I'm speaking about, it can be turned around, and we can make this a benefit, where there's going to have to be some tough decisions made. This is not fair to continue to do this to the county. So keeping that graph in mind, and in that presentation, this is better than we have done over the last two years, to have 103 days of cash. Heard the CFO during the exact same presentation, one day of cash equals $600,000. This is how I'm getting to my $11 million. My proposition is you reduce this back to 84 days, as it was at the end of July, August 1st, when the decision for the residential pilot was made, using the low end, $600,000 a day. Take that $11.4 million and put it into a money market account to earn a little bit of interest, and every month you pay the residential pilot out of that money market account. In the meantime, we'll get our heads together, hopefully collaboratively, working as a unified group, not throwing each other under the bus. Now, they won't talk to us, we didn't get an invite. That ship has sailed. We can't change the past, not even God can change the past. It's what we're going to do from today forward to make sure BPU stays in this county and as a benefit versus a burden. I think we can look collaboratively to add to this account, to avoid any increase to the utility rates. I also had some questions at the town hall from the same meeting regarding the August 2024 capital budget spend. At the end of August, you had 67% of your capital budget left. But you couldn't possibly cover the pilot, between that and $11 million that was moved to reserves. I'm sorry, shame, shame on you. That is absolutely unacceptable to every member of this community, and we have to do better, because most of you are elected officials, elected by the county. I'm sorry, if you could turn your mic on, we'd all love to hear it.
Mayor, no, no order, if we would, just continue with your presentation.
Mayor, I don't think we should criticize anybody. If we're supposed to hear a presentation, let's hear a presentation, not put blame on anybody.
A point of order, I get it. Ms. McCarthy, just stick to your presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so I would call for an entire entire audit on the budget. It all needs to be reviewed by an independent task force, not including members of the Board of Public Utilities. We need to review the capital project schedule to show the remaining work. We only have two months left. We know what we have left this year. We also know our long-lead items. They're coming in procurement, where invoices will be due. So at this point, we should know capital project, where we are going to stand at the end of 2024, and I have a hunch we have a little bit more there to make up the difference on that residential pilot. Just a little bit of a hunch, looking at the cost and revenue, but that's for a different meeting. We need to review all vacant positions that are included in both the 2024 and 2025 budgets, including the last time they were filled. Apply the same logic that the unified government applied when they remained revenue-neutral with their vacant positions. Review the percentage of maintenance work that is performed by Capital Electric versus BPU crews. Does Capital Electric pay BPU or give any sort of compensation back for their meetup location being at Piper Substation? Because driving the trucks in and out of the substation daily taxes not only the entrance and exit of the substation, but the road that the citizens then have to pay to maintain. So now we're paying, again, twice, probably three times, once we've added everything up. I think an intense review of the pension fund for the BPU needs to be done to ensure that it is solvent for the good employees that are there today, not the ones that are retiring tomorrow, but the ones that are there today that have been doing good work for many years, and that's in the best interest of everybody in this county. The proposals. Again, BPU reverses the money they added to the days of cash on hand in August of 2024, and use that money to pay the residential pilot, thereby removing it from the bill immediately, just in time for the holidays for these residents. It was promised, and it should be done. It was promised and it should be done. A full audit to be completed on the BPU budget. A review of all chief executive positions, COO, CIO, CAO, CCO, et cetera, that have been added over the last three to five years to determine the necessity of said positions. If they are deemed necessary, should they be staffed at the BPU level or at the unified government level? These are things to discuss. Bring in an outside law firm to ensure understanding and compliance to the charter ordinance. I am not a lawyer. Could be it's 100% compliant, but I know at the last meeting, there were a lot of questions and a lot of confusion surrounding that. I think we need to look at wording the charter for where we want to be in 20 years, not where we were 20 years ago. It's the future of Wyandotte County, not the past of Wyandotte County. All future rate increases be approved by a community task force, the unified government, as well as the board of directors. All future bond debt approved by the unified government as well as the BPU board of directors. All salary increases above COLA for director positions and above should go through the unified government as well. We need to look at ways to reduce our reliance on outside firms. And this is going to come by hiring more people on the labor side. Reliance less on Capital Electric and bring more of our own people in to do the work. We're going to partner with Kansas City Community College. We need to go all in, not just on engineers, interns for engineers. We need to go all in. The reason the Board of Public Utilities struggles to hire, and being in the industry, I know this is fact, is not due to pay and certainly not because of lack of good benefits. It is 100% the reputation of BPU and working there. The best way to change the reputation is to change the narrative. And the way to do that is to work together. And to do that, we have to be honest. We have to be transparent. We have to identify the problem to come up with a solution. Hiring more employees with less reliance on the Capital Electric will also help the pension stay solvent for the fantastic employees that are currently there. It is high time to listen to the people who elected you to represent them. The people begged for the lobby to reopen. You heard them and you spent their money on every solution to not reopen the lobby. The people begged for lower rates. Oh, you heard them, you heard them. And you added multiple chief executive positions and gave them staggering pay raises on the backs of the county. The people rejoiced when the pilot was going to be removed. Oh, you heard them, you heard them, made sure you move that money right quick into your savings. You took it a step further by speaking to the news and saying things that only caused divide between the Board of Public Utilities and the commissioners. And that is not fair to the county either. We elected all of you to represent us in different ways. We still all want all of you to represent us in different ways. But that's going to take communication between the two groups. The county's tired of running from meeting to meeting. I'm worn out and I've only been doing it two months. I'm worn out. So if it can't be done, then there needs to be a look, there needs to be a hard look at a soft consolidation of BPU and the UG. They are the parent company. But I believe, I hope I'm not wrong, I truly believe that the two sides will work together to benefit this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. What she presented were some hard questions, information she got from her knowledge, as well as information she's gathered from going to meetings and listening to people. Again, the concerns of the public should be the concerns of both this unified government as well as the Board of Public Utilities. One of the things that I've been advocating for is that we take a hard look, again, at not just who we are, but who we should be. And not just the unified government, but the Board of Public Utilities. One of the things that I ran on, and that's just not something I wanted, being community driven, those were the things that the public have told me resoundingly, that they wanted both of these bodies to start having a conversation about. How do we bring valued beneficial relief to our residents? These may be hard topics to have, but they're necessary conversations that we need to have. Because at the end of the day, if we get it right, the public will be the winner. And that's why we're all here. There would be no Board of Public Utilities, there would be no unified government without the public. And they rely on us to listen to them and to find the reasonable expectations that they have for us. Reasonable and responsible. And if we can find that, I know it's been said, we were talking about 38 million when you talk about the pilot. I believe our CFO is here. Our commission again took the resounding step to get us here to the point to where they can make informed decisions in regards to the pilot. And one was that was separating the residential from the commercial and business aspect. And so if we were just looking at residential, I believe we have our CFO here for the unified government. Could you tell us what that amount would be and what we're actually talking about?
Shelley Keneven, Chief Financial Officer for the Unified Government. Our 24 pilot that's related to residential is 13.1 million, but with the reduction that the mayor and commission approved, it'll be 12 million and some change. 12 million, 28,000.
Well, we're not looking at $38 million as far as what we're asking the Board of Public Utilities to take a hard look at. And I know that each one of you, it should be in your packet, the charter is there. You can read that for yourself as far as what's been approved in the charter, as far as what the pilot and how that's supposed to be tabulated, as far as what the unified government is supposed to get, which we took it down from 11.9 to 10.9%. So we're talking about $12 million, not $38 million. The conversation here tonight is based on the questions that were asked from both Mr. Steiniger and Ms. McCarthy. Hopefully, some of those questions can be answered from the BPU board. And hopefully, moving forward, we can find a way to remove collectively, find a way to responsibly remove the burdens and fees and pilot off of people's utility bill. So it's a real utility bill, so they're not getting cut off for unnecessary fees or a tax that really hurts the working poor and hardworking families the most. And so, and I think that's really what residents have been asking us to do, is at least try to get there and to deliver that for them, as well as improve customer service. Not just from BPU, but from this unified government as well, because we all are public servants. And so those were the questions that were put out there. I will now turn it over to Mr. Groneman. You're free to ask any questions or basically interact with your board to get questions of the presenters or to answer some of the questions that were brought forward.
I thought that the purpose of this meeting was to have a joint meeting between the Unified Government Commission and the Board of County and the Board of Public Utilities. That's what I thought this meeting was going to be about, where we could sit down together, talk about the issues, look at the concerns that the people have and try to collaboratively come up with solutions. I didn't, I wasn't expecting this. We're not prepared to address any of, any of these other stuff. So I'm disappointed that the meeting is not what it was, what I thought it was intended to be.
The meeting is exactly what you just described. These are the challenges and the problems that have been brought forward from people in the community. And it's, we're just asking you to respond. And if you need more time to respond to some of these questions, I mean, that's something you can just say. But we're looking for solutions and this is a joint meeting. And it's about finding solutions to the problems that residents and our customers have with not just the BPU, but also this unified government. And I'm going to tell you what, these are hard conversations to have, but they're necessary conversations. And I'm not here to play politics. I'm not. I didn't ask to be here as the mayor. I was asked to be here and that's why I ran for mayor. And the commitment I made to the community is to start having these hard conversations on behalf of the people of Wyandotte County that have told me that they've had enough of the, of some of the stuff that they've seen go on here at the unified government and at the Board of Public Utilities. You may not like that, but that's what I'm hearing every day from our residents. And I can take any of you with me because I hear the complaints every day. If you don't believe I'm out there, come with me. And I'll take you to family after family, business after business, residence after residence. They want us to have these hard conversations. They want relief, they want improved customer service, and they want us to find, to come together and find real solutions to the problems that we know impact the lives of real people every day. So what you just mentioned, and no disrespect, is exactly why we're here. And I encourage all of us to start answering some of these questions on behalf of the people and working collectively and collaboratively to try and find solutions to the concerns of our residents. Because right now, a lot of people are saying they don't feel like they have a voice, they don't feel like they're being heard, and they want someone to at least start working on behalf. And I'm just, I'm just being honest with you.
And to be honest with you, I've talked to people, I'm out in the community, I hear things. And the burden and the benefit that you talk about, whether we're a burden or a benefit to the community, the burden is not the BPU. The burden is all the fees and the stormwater and the crash and all that. It's on the BPU bills. If that was not on the BPU bills, we wouldn't, there wouldn't be a conversation about whether we were a benefit or a burden. So that's what we need to discuss, is how we can, you know, we can resolve those issues and get to where we want to be, both of us as partners, as you said at the very beginning.
And that's a great start. That's what I'm looking for, is that conversation, that's what I'm talking about. That conversation right there is how do we make our utility bill a real utility bill on behalf of our residents that are
Groneman. And that's easy. All you need to do is say, BPU, take it off the bill.
And I'm going to turn that over to you and let you run your, on your board. I think some of you have some questions.
Yeah. May I say something? Thank you, Mr. Groneman, Mr. Mayor, Commission, fellow board members, UG and staff and BPU staff. The, the, the presentation, Mr. Mayor, seemed to be attacking BPU. And that is how, how I felt. And, and to be honest with
Excuse me?
Let's, let's remain decorum and not any outbursts. If there's any outbursts, I will have the officer, have you removed?
To be, to be honest, Mayor, I came on the board this year and certainly the things that were stated mean the things I inherited when I became a part of this board. So, so when I look at the blames, particularly in what was stating, she talked about our rates. And, and when we look at our rates, Mr. Mayor, you will, you will notice that when you compare our utility to other, other utilities, we are a small, fairly small utility compared to other utilities. And when you, it's just like, and I always give, I like to give examples. If I have five kids and you have two kids and we make the same salary and you divide your salary with your kids, one kid will get, you divide your salary, your kid will get more money than, than my kids. If I have five kids, you have two. So the thing is, is that the spread, we have 65,000, approximately 65,000 customers. So the cost of running our utility must be spread to those customers. The cost of it is spread to those customers and what they provide. All of our revenue comes from customers. And so the pilot is something that the unified government needs in order to function. You need it for your budget, whatever you need it for. And we spoke, I think previously in our last meeting regarding the capital improvement projects. And, and I don't know whether she's looking at a calendar year or a fiscal year. There are two differences. You cannot look at a calendar year compared to a fiscal year when you talk about budgets. You have to look at both. And, and you cannot compare the two when, when you talk about what's in, what's in, and you talk about December. That's not the end of, that's the end of a calendar year, but not the end of a fiscal year. So it's very important that we look at those things as well. Also, wanted to say that, that when you talk about comparing a investor-owned utility to a municipally-owned utility, a municipally-owned utility, particularly this municipally-owned utility, there's no investor-owned utility that, that gives free electricity or free water to the municipality. We do. And that's why you consider the value to, to the unified government. And so you have to take those things into consideration when you start comparing us to investor-owned utilities, the amount of customers we have and what services we're providing for free to the unified government. That's very important that we look at. Thank you, I wanted to say those things.
Brett Parker, BPU board member. It's hard to know where to start in all of that information that was just presented, but I want to begin piggybacking off of something that Mr. Wake just touched on, on the regional rate comparison chart. He's right. One of the expenses that BPU carries is providing free water and electricity to this municipality. That is not something that Evergy does for its municipalities. That, that is a real cost. In fact, that is more than the cost that residents pay on the pilot fee. If we were actually just taxed on property tax, that payment to the UG would be significantly less than the $37 million that's paid in the pilot fee. In fact, if you took those two things, if the BPU were to start assessing bills for electric and water and if the pilot fee was equivalent to what it would be for just paying property tax, that $37 million disappears off the BPU books. Now, we're not here throwing those things out to push them because we know ultimately everyone, the same people who pay our rates are the same people who pay your property tax. It's that we all serve the same folks, right? So I'm not saying that as this is my counterproposal. But when we talk about things that people are potentially upset with the BPU on or upset with the unified government on, we need to own who is responsible for some of those things. I do not set the pilot rate. Were it up to me, it would be what it would be if we paid property tax. That seems like the fairest way. I understand that would be quite a strain on the unified government's budget. So I'm not proposing that you slash your budget to do that. I just, let's acknowledge, six of us on the Board of Public Utilities don't set that fee. We don't choose to assess all those other unnecessary fees that the mayor referenced. That is not up to us. We hear the complaints about that too. If it were in the power of the six of us to remove those things from the bill, they would have been gone at least the second Stevie and I joined the bill in January, but I would imagine far before that. So we need to be real about who has ownership of some of those things. I also want to address some of the things that were in the second presentation. To our proposals here. If we take the proposal of removing some of the extra days of cash on hand that was suggested and put that money in a money market account, it was suggested that we could use that to pay the pilot. Do you have an estimate for how much interest $11.4 million would generate for paying the pilot each year?
Um, no, but I can tell you that it wouldn't cost the taxpayers an additional 10% on top of, let me finish, please, your reconnect fee. It is absolutely absurd with
All right, that's not what I asked. Do you have an estimate on what that would generate?
I believe that I just not say, no, I do not.
Thank you.
But I guess, no, I'm, I'm going to finish here. I'm going to finish. I'm going to finish. I'm going to finish. I was invited, I did not, I did not ask to-
I'm not inviting you to make a second presentation, I was just asking a question.
Point of order, Mayor. Point of order.
Okay, well, first of all, I need the commissioners to maintain your decorum and let me run the meeting. I'm an adult, I know how to run the meeting. I don't need to be told that.
Then run it.
Okay, and I'm going to warn you one last time, we are going to maintain decorum in this meeting, period. And that's for everybody. You too, Mike.
Cheers, Mayor.
I'm not the one shouting out a term, and I'm not here to debate and argue with you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move on.
Ms. McCarthy, when he asks you the question, please just answer the question as it's asked. This is not a debate. Only answer the questions that he asks you, and leave it at that.
Okay, I was asked to come here, so I will be answering no further questions.
I, I did some math.
Is there, is there an estimate? Because that was one of the questions-
I, I did some math, and I'm certainly not in the-
Commissioner, Commissioner, again, point of order. We're going to have the commission weigh in. This is strictly for the Board of Public-
And that's where I'm headed anyway, so, but just back of the napkin math here, if, if you, you put eleven point four million dollars in a money market account, and let's say it returns eight percent annually, which would be pretty great return right now, you'd raise seventy-six thousand dollars a month. Now, if the unified government wants to take seventy-six thousand dollars a month for our payment of the pilot, I think this is a productive meeting, and we can all go home real soon. I, I doubt that that is a sufficient sum. That time twelve months gets you just shy of one million dollars, which is, is real money. I don't want to discount that. I would also imagine, though, that BPU's reserve funds are not sitting in a checking account, generating no interest, so it may be a moot point regardless. But I want to, we throw things out here like, oh, well, we could solve the problem if we just took this sum of money. It is absurd to think that eleven point four million dollars is going to generate enough interest to pay a thirty-seven million dollar bill. I wish it was, did. I also want to touch on one of the proposals is future bond debt will also be approved by the unified government. Is that not a role you all already play and have done on all past bond debt? Okay. Do, do we vet presentations before they're made to this board? I'm, I am all for a hard factual discussion, but in order to do that, we need to be dealing I've probably monopolized enough time, so I'll leave it at that for the time being. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ozzie, anything you want to say?
I do not, Mr. Groneman. Thank you.
Thank you, Board President Groneman, Mayor, members that are here. This is, um, this is a very intriguing discussion, is one we probably should have done on an ongoing basis. I'm going to keep my comments brief. I think at the end of the day, and I appreciate the presentation that has been given by Ms., I'm sorry, McCarthy, former colleague, Senator Steiner, and we live in this community, and as was in your opening statement, the mayor's opening statement. I think we all have come here, both boards, members of the public, because we are trying to get to the bottom line of the concerns that all the community has, and that is, whether it's from our electric and water bill, whether it's from our escalating taxes, people are just overburdened. And so if there are proposals coming forward, if there's some way that we can find that will increase, well, for me, it's customer service, which lessens the public ire, and at the same times, lessens the taxes, lessens the fees, some of these proposals that have been offered, whether they are, some are novel, some are pre-existing. At the end of the day, that we would all take our time, this is a special session, this, the special time, and find the, the recommendations that we can take forward to restore public confidence and restore the bottom line of what is a, a budget that's in jeopardy. We haven't talked about bond indebtedness or the indebtedness of the utility or of the UG. But to offset that, that's my reason for being here today. I want us to be solution-driven. I want us to look at proposals that are in front of us, and, you know, I, I understand the clash. I, I, I ran as everyone else did, listening to what people were saying in our communities. And some of these proposals I actually think could make sense, Ms., um, um, McCarthy, I'm sorry, I'm just meeting you, ma'am. Some of them we, we can take a look at. There's a couple of them I can add on here. I've been a big proponent of what we're doing or not doing with our dormant properties, like the Quandero plant is sitting dormant and has not been leased out or utilized, and what revenue we could retain, um, uh, or by leasing it out, or even by selling something we're not using. There are other suggestions, too, that each of us, and I hope we'll hear from the other commissioners, as to what we can do at the end of the day to get something solvent together that we can say to restore the public's confidence that we're moving together. Finally, um, the tax shift, or the rate shift, or the financial shift of something called a pilot that would be on one side of the bill and today, because it's being generated as a line item from the UG, whether it should have been there or not, with respect, we're still trying to analyze that, but it is having to be made up somewhere, because it's, it would have to be made up through, um, probably a rate increase. It's not necessarily, I think, at the end of the day, the solution or the shell game that certainly I want to see played with, um, the ratepayers, with the taxpayers, with our constituents. We want to find a way to reduce the costs. I, I'm sorry, speaking for myself, I want to find a way to reduce, um, and to generate more revenue independent of tax ratepayers, to increase customer service, and to reduce the indebtedness of the utility. And I believe that we have, we have enough minds around the table that can look toward those solutions. That's why I'm here today. Appreciate the invitation, Mr. Mayor, but that's why I'm here today, and that's what I'll continue to listen to. And I hope we all will keep that open mind, for at the end of the day, we owe that to a lot of people who are waiting to hear good things come out of this meeting.
And may I just add, Mr. Mayor, that the board is in place, my understanding of the board being in place is to collaborate with unified government to find solutions to issues that, um, um, will relieve, bring excellent customer service to the citizens of Wyandotte County. And so what we're, what we, I don't want you to take us for granted ever, but to have others from the outside to come in to talk about things that we could discuss ourselves and bring solutions to, I thought was, was disrespectful to us as a board. And I feel that the, the six board members that we have, we've been, if, if you look at the work that we've been doing the last, uh, uh, time, the last several months that I've been on the board, Mr. Johnson has laid out continuously ways in which we've cut, 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 cut. And, and, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm saying, even with employees, even with, with, with things that, that we felt to, that will bring value to the utility, uh, and also bring less burden to the customer, we've been cutting, cutting, cutting. We, we, we still are, are giving, giving, giving a lot to the unified government. And also, um, uh, when you talk about this unified government has streamlined, I've been a part of BPU and unified government since I've been here in eighty-five. When you talk about streamlining, revenue neutral was a community demanded act. I would like to really hear where the unified government has streamlined. That's what I want to, I want to hear, uh, because burden is not just BPU, it's, it's both of us together. We have created this burden for our taxpayers, our ratepayers, how we, and we need to together, come together to figure out how we can bring resolution to our customers. And so if we could, if we could do that, uh, I think, uh, our customers would be happy with both BPU and the unified government.
No, I'm, I think, uh, we're good.
Thank you all.
Now, we might, I'm going to jump back in later.
You can jump back in. And thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. And I apologize, there was no disrespect by having Ms. McCarthy here. That was just to bring forth a community viewpoint with some recommendations to hopefully get a real conversation started and allow our commission to hear some of the concerns from our residents as well. And I, I, if you listen to my opening comments, it falls right in line with the, with what Senator Haley mentioned. This is about solutions. Yeah, these are hard conversations to have, but it's even harder when I have to go listen out in the community of how burdensome property taxes, user fees, whatever's on the, the BPU bill, be it unified government-generated or BPU-generated, on how that's having an adverse impact on a lot of our residents. They want us at the table to find real solutions, if they can be found. And that's what this is about. I don't want us to get caught up in, again, and I mentioned this before, pointing fingers at each other. How do we move beyond that, not just look at who we are, but whether, who we should be on behalf of the residents that are saying, we want better from our government? I know I started the conversation as BPU a benefit or a burden. I think it's a benefit, but how do we build on that benefit and then really allow our residents to see that benefit in a way that they can be realized? And I agree, some of those fees are unified government-generated, but I think the biggest question for tonight for all of us is the pilot. I think somebody mentioned again the thirty-seven or thirty-eight million. We're only talking about twelve million dollars. Is there a way in a conversation that we can have where this board, who does the budget and is the managing partner for this unified government by charter, to manage the Board of Public Utilities, is there some way we can find some middle ground to bridge that gap, to take the pilot off and make sure that we're adhering to the charter? That's the question. Number one, are we adhering to the charter? And then number two, can relief be found on behalf of our residents? And I don't know. I'm sure there's people, a lot smarter than me around this table, that have a lot more expertise and experience and probably can add a lot more, but that's why we're at the table, to have a real hard conversation, not because I want it, because people in the community said they wanted to see this happen. And I don't want it to see be a confrontational meeting, because shared success can happen right here at this meeting. That can be beneficial to everybody that loves and calls Wyandotte County home. And that's what I don't want us to lose sight about. It's not about me, it's not about you, it's not about either one of our, our utilities or the unified government, it's about the people. And what I hear, I don't hear a lot about, and a lot of our conversations is, the people. We talk about the utility, we talk about staff, we talk about the unified government, we talk about executive positions, but outside of that are the people, and that's who I care about. Because I've watched them become frustrated, some are desperate, and some are just in utter dis- despair behind the burdensome taxes and fees and the utilities. And so I just, I ask all of us, not just today, but continue to work to find real solutions to the problems, again, that impact the lives of real people every single day, and this does not have to be confrontational, and I don't want it to be. I just ask that we all be respectful of Ms. McCarthy, her presentation, her opinions. Yes, she may have said, uh, you know, look at bonds, that was a, that was an excellent recommendation. But the, the response to that should have been, we already do that. Thank you for bringing that recommendation forward, that's something we're already doing. Not ostracizing or criticizing, because people are trying to help us get to something better for the community. That's why they're here. And she volunteered to be here. She didn't have to come, but she's frustrated, like so many other people in the community. And they're passionate because of their frustration, because they want better. Not, she does not hear for herself, she's here for the community, just like all of us. And so I just ask that we maintain a level of decorum, professionalism, and respect for everybody's opinions. And then we go through that, and I outlined everything, what's reasonable, what's responsible, and what's actionable, and what can we get done collectively, everybody, that's going to be a benefit to the people of Kansas City, Kansas, not just today, but moving forward for several generations ahead, long past me, probably people that aren't even born yet. We need to take a hard look again at our policies, our practices, our procedures, and what we can do to make life better for the people that are struggling every single day here. And those are the people that I connect with. So, thank you again, Mr. Groneman, and thank you, BPU Board. You're free during our time to, to interject and answer questions, but now is the time for our commissioners, and Commissioner Stites had a question.
District seven, so when are we going to start working on those items that you just talked about? I mean, we heard, we heard, you know, the presentations, so when are we going to really start putting the, um, the meat to the, or the foot to the road, or where you call it, tire to the road, and start talking about how do we do this? We heard the presentation, and one of the things that I wanted to ask, and I apologize, sir, I don't, I don't know, you don't know your first name, but your name, I can't even see that far anymore, I'm old.
Brett Parker.
Right. So that was one of the things that I was wanting to try to get to with that, with your, um, putting the money in the money market account. So I, but if I remember right, though, you were already talking, you were saying, back that number up from a hundred and three to eighty-four, right? And so then that gets you down to, I'm not sure where that eighty-four, where that number eighty-four comes in. Okay, okay, I didn't understand that. So we're, so at that eight percent that you were talking about, and I'm not sure why it went from at day eighty-four to the level that it's now, but that should just be a simple question that we ask and get an answer to, as to why that occurred. And I'm sure there's probably an answer, but I don't know what it is. If you'd like to answer now, that'd be great.
I, I think we're coming off of the high season, we got more revenues coming in, days of cash on hand goes up, we're getting ready to go into a, a low season, the days of cash on hand is going to go down. So if we, if we take eleven point four million or something out of our days' cash on hand, down to whatever days it is, then by January, February, our days' cash on hand is going to be down to thirty, forty days.
All right.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a cyclical thing.
Okay, got it. So one of the things that was mentioned, and I forget who mentioned it, it was about two, two charges that are on the BPU bill now, and that it's stormwater and trash, right? That appears that, that you were saying-
And wastewater.
Uh, wastewater, uh, that could, that could come off of the BPU bill right now, right? So I'm asking, why is it on there now? And I'm not sure who we ask and who can answer. If we're here to problem solve, let's problem solve. Why is it on their bill now? That's open to anybody.
I, I think it's on, because as a, as a benefit to the UG, we're already billing people, th- this is how it started, many, many years ago. I mean, the BPU's been around long before the unified government, long before the seven member commission, three member commission. So it was on there so that it was just easier to have one billing system than to have two.
Because you're mail, you're mailing-
We're mailing out bills to everybody already and-
Right.
And so that was, that was easy. But-
So then, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
But where the problem comes in is that now people are getting cut off because they're not paying the trash, or they're not paying the other parts of it, because it's all one BPU bill.
So their electricity is being compromised because they're not paying a, a trash-
Yes. And the total bill, they have to pay the total-
They have to pay the bill in total to get it. Hey, well, well, here's a good start, I feel like. Let's separate that. Like, you know what? If, I mean, shouldn't, I mean, heck, I've only been working on this for like three minutes.
Yeah.
And here we are.
Okay.
Okay, so there's something that we can work towards. So look, I mean, you know what, I'm, I'm, I'm not, and I, I know I, I say things and jokingly sometimes, but you know what, at the end of the day, and I agree with the mayor, you know what, I'm not, I don't want this to be confrontational, this is, this is something that is, that, that we're all passionate about. I know you guys don't want to, you know, see the rates higher than, and no more than I want to, right? It affects my mom and my dad and your families, just like it, it does everybody in this room, right? So if there's responsible ways that we can do it, I sure think that we should be able to, with the people that are at this table, come up with ways- come up with ways, and maybe you guys have, I don't know that anybody's asked you tonight, do you guys have any thoughts or ideas of how we can make up this gap of $12 million? And really, if we went with that 11.4 million, I'm just saying, if we did, we're, we're at $912,000, Brett, that's what you said, then, then we're really, now we're down to talking about $11 million, right, that gap.
Commissioner Stites, if I may, this is Rose Mulvaney Henry. It's, it's, you're not going to want to hear this, right? So what we estimate, the amount in electric and water that the unified government buildings do not pay is roughly 10 or 12 million dollars. So nobody wants to hear that, and that's fine, right?
I, I, I do.
Well, but I mean.
Comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges, let's, let's put it out there. If we, if we are not paying utilities, because we own the utility company, whether that's water and trash, that number should be put out there. And if you guys aren't paying property tax, you guys, that number should be brought out to us also, so we know what that number.
Right.
Then when we have all the numbers on the table, we can say, here's where we're at. Let's figure this out.
Well, and Commissioner Stites.
We don't have those numbers.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but last July, when we all sat in the same room and did the same thing, we actually presented, there was presentations by both sides, talking about some of these figures. Those figures are out there from July of 2023. Those figures are there. And at that time, July of 2023, I think the feeling was and the thought was, is we were going to get a task force back together, the pilot reduction, reduction task force back together, that did not happen. And then in May of this year, we thought after the committee, the meeting that I think Mr. Wakes attended, we were going to do that same thing. Now, I've said it before, I'll say it again, I received a meeting invite to something in May, for May 20th. Of that, it was called a bill separation task force at that point. And two days later, I received a cancellation of that meeting invite to be rescheduled, and that's never been rescheduled. So when you talk about, we want to problem solve, and we want to, you know, a subset of our elected officials have tried to come together and do this. I don't know why the meeting was sent out, and I don't know why it was rescinded.
There should be no person that gets their electricity, electricity cut off because they didn't pay their trash or couldn't afford their trash. You know what, they might be able to do something different with their trash, or they might, but they have to have hot water, and they have to have electricity, and nobody's electricity should be cut off. So I know there's others that want to speak. I'm here to assist in any way. If I need, want to be on that committee, or we're going to move that forward, I will be one to assist in that if I'm needed. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Ms. Mulvaney, we will reengage that. That original task force was started by me. Commissioner Bynum graciously took the lead on that, and I thank you for being a part of that as well. But we can reinstitute that. And I totally agree with Commissioner Stites, and that's the whole purpose. How do we make the BPU bill a real utility bill, so people are not cut off for not paying excessive user fees and a pilot tax? Because it's burdensome. And, and that's the solution that I think most people are wanting us to at least have a conversation about. And I don't have the answer to it, but thank you, Commissioner Stites, Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to the BPU and board members for, for being here, as well as our citizen guests. I have a variety of questions and comments. Some of them, I think, legal and BPU staff are going to need to answer. When I look at the proposals slide from Ms. McCarthy, number four says, bring in an outside law firm to ensure understanding and compliance to the charter ordinance. I'll put that one to you. Is that something we can do?
We can, but I have opined before, I believe we are, we are in compliance.
With the charter ordinance?
Yes.
But speak to the first part, bring in an outside law firm.
Well, we do, you know, we do that. We consult outside law firms and to make sure, and in fact have done that. And are we, and I am assured we are in compliance.
And so I just wonder, like, for example, for the public consumption as well as ours, you know, perhaps that's a document that needs to be drafted and shared, that we are in compliance.
Okay.
Charter ordinance. I kind of feel like, and Ms. McCarthy, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, because I think your number four is asking about the BPU charter. Or is it asking about the UG charter?
He was asking about the unified government charter, just to ensure that everybody understood what the gross. Because sometimes people look at BPU's total revenue, and that's not fair for them. It has to be their gross operating revenue. And so, and I don't know what the ins and outs of that are. I'm not.
But that's helpful. Thanks. And then, again, to legal, you know, all future rate increases. In our current status, as two separate elected boards, number five says, all future current, all future rate increases approved by UG as well as the Board of Public Utilities. And I'm, again, looking to you for just in general legal terms, is that something that could happen right now?
That would require a charter change.
That would require a charter change.
Yes.
Okay. When we, when our unified government staff, and I think at that time was meeting pretty regularly with BPU staff last spring to begin this in earnest look at bill separation, what we learned, what the commissioners learned through that exercise was that for us to develop a system to collect the fees that we're currently collecting on your bill was going to be very expensive, millions of dollars, was the estimate that we were given to stand up a billing system and basically a billing department. So one of the questions that I have is, I have a variety of questions, Mayor, I'm sorry. We've technically already separated these charges on the BPU bill. Right? We did that work three or four years ago. BPU charges, UG charges, trash, stormwater, sewer, pilot. So half the battle is kind of done, as far as I'm concerned, and I wonder if we couldn't simply say on this page, here's your BPU charges, go online to bpu.com and pay them. And here's your page. It still comes in the BPU bill. But here's your page with your trash and your stormwater and your sewer. Go to yco kck.com or my YCO or whatever system we currently use to collect online payments and pay those. So I feel like that's doable. I, I looked at our finance folks, to, and our IT folks, to, to determine, like, on our side, is it doable? Because the BPU already has all this technical infrastructure in place. Whether we do, I don't know. But one of the things that I think has concerned the UG side of this conversation the most, beyond the high cost of standing up our own billing department, is what do we do? We know what you do if lights and water aren't paid. What do we do when stormwater, sewer, and trash go unpaid? That's the hard question for us to answer, and we don't have a good answer. So we would need further legal review of what our remedies could be. And this goes to, I think Commissioner Stites may be asking about the history of how this came. Part of the reason why is because of the hammer, if you will, sorry to say, that you have to pay it all, or your lights and water get shut off. I wasn't here for that history, so I'm taking a guess at that, but it's probably a very real possibility that that's why those two things are together. But could we separate them in a way that's maybe not as hard as we think possibly, and I would like us to look at that. But Mayor, I have a, I have a concern. And that is, if our research, as we state, has shown that per our own charter, this is not to be a citizen surcharge, then how is it that we can leave the pilot on the commercial and industrial portions of the bill? Either so if we're following our charter, which is what we keep saying we want to do, and we have research that shows us and reminds us, if you will, that the pilot is not a citizen surcharge, then how do you leave it on these customers' bills and remove it from residential only? So I don't know the answer, but I think we better figure it out. So I have questions. Go ahead.
I think the first thing we need to, to figure out is whether the way that the BPU collects pilot today is legal or not legal.
Right, and I.
And I think that.
I thought we had that answer.
That it, that it is, yes, it is legal, the way that it's done.
The access fee, or the fee, or the, whatever you want to, whatever you call it, the way that we are now assessing the pilot is legal?
Yes.
As, as, okay.
And I, and I think that's been one of the questions that we've grappled with this whole time. But Mayor, these are the, the questions and suggestions, frankly, that I have right now. And like I said, with this notion of we already have the bills separated, it's a matter of separating how they get paid, and for us, it's a matter of dealing with the, the individuals who cannot pay their storm, trash, and sewer. So they don't, you know, we don't just, we can't turn your sewer off. Now, we can not pick up your trash. What's that going to look like? Well, true. I hate to say it, but imagine that, imagine that exponentially. So, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on your question, I believe that the commission voted a while back to separate residential from commercial. And I don't know how that plays in to the pilot, based on the Commissioner's question legal. That's, that's the first one. And I'm going to, I'm going to yield, but just if you think about what I'm asking you, and I'll come back to you. The second one is, it'd be nice to have something from our legal department in writing, and maybe supported by the Attorney Journal's Office. Charter ordinance number CO-3-02, section 2B, that talks about specifically what gross resident revenues are and how that's to be paid. Because I'm confused, because initially, we were told we were not in compliance. Today, you're telling me we are in compliance. That's not only confusing to me, and I'm sure some commissioners, but probably to the public. And so we need something definitive, and I believe that was a recommendation coming from someone, that maybe a third-party counsel that is impartial can look at this and get us the answers we need that can exude confidence in the opinions coming from our legal department, because right now I have zero confidence. And I'm just being honest with you, because I've been told two things. And one of the roles of mayor is, is I interpret policy to the public. That's one of my roles. I don't know what to tell the public at this point. So that's something we need to take a deep dive and a hard look at, because right now I've been told two things. And, and so just be prepared, if, if you want to give something in writing to this commission, to the board, and to the public, I think, I think we owe that, because there've been two narratives that have been put out. And so we need to make sure that we get it right. So just, I want to leave that with you. And then we had Commissioner Lopez, and then immediately after Commissioner Lopez, we had Commissioner Kane. Commissioner Lopez? I'm sorry. Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Hill, then Commissioner Kane. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, so I have a lot of questions here. I mean, if you guys would have known tonight, would you know now, but this meeting, would you have rescinded your invite? But I'm just asking right now. So I'm looking at the, the regional electric rate kilowatts per BPU. The residence is 15.97. And then the commercial is 13.09, industrial is 9.6. Why is the residential higher than commercial and industrial? But but also, what, what really concerns me is our, is our financial hits that I'm looking at, like Rock Island Bridge project, they still owe like little over 34,000. Home Field is almost at 100 and a half. And Delaware Parkway is like a little over 100. So, you know, what, like what Stevie Wakes was saying earlier, you know, that about the UG having, what, I think you were saying anyway, like we have free power here at the UG, but there's a lot of, there's just a lot of other hits that were taken from people that can, you know, organizations that can easily pay. I mean, I have some great ideas, like if we stop joint funding with YDEC, I mean, BPU is shelling out 750,000, UG selling out another 750. I'm seeing what we can save. Like if we merge the IT, you know, we can save 1.2. If we merge public relations, we save 600. We eliminate wastewater and residential pilot fees for residence accounts, and UG can, then we can make that up in the budget. Traffic control, we can, we can merge those duties, probably save 900, a little over 900. We cancel all the food and entertainment accounts that, that's getting free utilities. We can save 600. And we, and what if we, we merged CFO in their, their finance divisions, we merged them people, we can save a lot of money. We can save enough, we can take the pilot off for the residentials. And we're, we're ahead of the game. So there's a lot to chew on there, but we just come together and get this lined out. We can do it. And then we take the pilot off, and then problem solved. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill.
Commissioner Hill, District 4, just want to say thank you to the BPU Board for being here with us and for our presenters on this evening. I do have a couple of questions, rather pointed questions, and just because I don't know. So the first one is your IRP plan, the Integrated Resource Plan, which is a 15 to 20-year plan. And that plan, will there be some suggestions or ideas or comparison with rate fees across the country, or suggestions for what should be here in this region?
So the IRP plan looks at future generation projections. What, what, what is our community going to need? And then what are the most economical ways to produce that energy production here in Wyandotte County, right? So there are, you know, other factors for other locations. They're going to have different regulatory structures, perhaps. They're going to have different availability and access to energy. So it's not a comparing across the board price-wise. What it is, is to produce or to, you know, provide the power in Wyandotte County under these scenarios, what are going to be the most economical ways? And, and we look at that under a variety of different circumstances, right? If fuel costs go up, is that going to change which, which plan would be the most economical? If the goal is to be as green as possible, what way do you go on that? So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. I do think that is helpful information, and I think the, the KCC rate study of 2023 is probably a good place to look where some of that's already been done. It just, that's not part of the IRP process.
Thank you. And I, I said immediately, I didn't know, so it was great. Thank you for helping me.
I was just going to say, can I add that the IRP plan is available, is it not, on a, on a website? And it's provided where you can look at it and, and, but it's still a plan. Like you said, it's pretty fluid.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then I really appreciate the mayor pulling us all together just to have this discussion. And I, I really hope we can continue to have them, and maybe when we come, we have some specific goals for that meeting, some very specific. So in my mind. So in my mind, we keep hearing about it was thirty-eight million, now twelve million for the pilot. And, you know, we need to get it separated and and all of that. And without blaming anybody, what could we really do? Should our finance departments, the BPU Finance Department, along with the UG Finance Department, get together and work on some strategies or ideas around what we could do to bridge that gap? And I appreciate the mayor mentioning it's for our community, it's for our people. So I I just think it's time that we really do dig in deep and begin to solve some of the problems. And I think that might be an area where if we just start digging in with the finances, that could really be helpful. I also noted that downtown here on Fifth, if you go in to pay your bill there, you can't use a debit or credit card. Can someone, I think the the other areas in the community you can, but just down here you cannot. Is that correct or incorrect?
Lori Austin, Chief Financial Officer for the BPU. We look at, we absorb all the fees associated with all the payments electronically. And so we look at, you know, what provides a value to the utility of being able to, you know, for a customer to pay their bill. The cost at the kiosk to use a credit card or a debit card is very high in comparison to what it is for us to pay on, for a customer to pay online.
So I the kiosks is expensive, but we have them and we use a debit and credit card at the kiosks, correct?
No, we don't use a debit and credit card at the kiosk. It takes cash and checks.
Okay, okay. Is there a possibility that the finances could be compromised if you use cash?
As far as the cash in the machines and stuff. I mean, we have, you know, our Brink's comes and picks up the cash out of the machines a couple of times a week or whatever, and it's monitored by the third party that we have our 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 contract with.
Okay, it sounds like a pretty dumb question on my end. However, it's very inconvenient for our community. They could just, they go everywhere else in America, and they can use their debit and credit card. So that's the reason for my question. So thank you for being kind enough to answer. Another question I have is in regards to the opportunity for our constituents who are onboarding with BPU services. And it is suggested, well mandated by BPU, that your fee for deposit is according to your credit score? I'm not sure, but I think we're the only one in the region that has that requirement. Is there a reason why? Is that something we can change in the future? Is that something we can collaborate on and talk about for changes in the future?
Commissioner Hill, this is Rose Mulvaney Henry, and I know that that is something near and dear to your heart. We actually have Abby. Thought she wasn't going to have to speak. We actually have the our CAO in the audience, who is the head of our customer service at this point, who comes from other utilities. So I want her to actually answer that question.
Thank you, Rose. Abby Frye, Chief Administrative Officer, Kansas City BPU. I've spent over twenty years in utilities. I worked for Western Energy, Kansas Gas Service, and now for BPU. So the credit check is a soft credit check. It does not do anything to your credit or anything like that. It just looks at the risk, the payment risk of the individual. And so determining based off of that risk or if a customer does not want to or is unable to provide documentation or proof of who they are. So if they're unable to provide a driver's license or something like that, then there's a maximum deposit on that. But that is very, that, I'm sorry to interrupt you. That's very standard with other utilities. They do a soft check just to look at the risk, to see if there's any previous utility debt that's been left behind with other utilities. For example, if a customer moves to Wyandotte County that was previously an EverGee customer and left a debt with EverGee, it would flag that as a potential high-risk customer.
Okay, thank you. Does the customer have to pay for that credit check?
No.
And does the customer's deposit, is it based on the score of the credit?
So that's where there's no score. We don't get a score. You know, when you buy a car or buy a house, there's a, you know, a score, a number that you get. This just simply tells us if that customer is potentially high-risk for paying the utility bill or not. And if they come back as a high-risk, then that deposit would be assessed.
So did you change the policy this year?
Let me take that one. Thank you. Commissioner Hill, we we have not voted on the policy yet, have we? Okay, so November sixth, I believe it's on our agenda next week. I don't believe that there's any holdup on that. We, that that policy should come through with flying colors with all six of us, I hope. But so if you have no credit or if you come back, well, on the on the soft credit check with, you know, your zero risk, there is no deposit assessed on, and that is something that BPU has never done before. So there's a new tier.
Excuse me, I don't mean
Yes, ma'am, you're okay.
I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly. As of November sixth,
If it passes.
The new policy, that there will be no deposit.
If you have, if you have no credit, so there's no credit to assess out there? Or if the soft credit check comes back and you are deemed no risk by the third-party credit agency?
Okay, deemed low risk, so that means?
Deemed no risk.
No risk?
No risk.
Okay, so if my credit score is five hundred and twenty-five, what is that?
And again, we don't see the score. So we we use a third-party, right, to do the soft credit, as do most consumer-oriented companies. I mean, my day job, my company does the same thing, right? We never see a score.
Okay.
We we only see what the risk gets assessed by a third-party that's not BPU.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a flex pay program that they can enter into when they start their service, and there's no deposit with that.
And am I correct? If they don't have a bank account, do they get an upcharge on the deposit or no?
Under the flex pay, there's no deposit.
Okay.
At all. I mean, there's this, you know, you
But do they have to have a bank account?
Abby?
Are you specifically talking about the flex pay or just a bank account in general?
In general.
No.
They don't have to have a bank account.
No, we don't ask for a customer's bank account information unless they want to be put on like an auto payment or something like that.
Okay.
So if a customer doesn't have a bank account, they can bring cash to a kiosk machine and pay that way without having a bank account. So that's not a requirement.
Okay, thank you. And then one of the things I'd like to say also is that I welcome these meetings. It's very educational for me. But that we do with every meeting have some real specific items that we can discuss together and not just talk about them, but really come up with some solutions. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike Kane, Commissioner, District Five. You know, and I asked for this meeting, but I also asked for an outside person to be here to give us some guidance so it takes the personalities out. Steiniger wanted to sell the BPU a long time ago, and she's a former employee and perhaps is not happy that that she left. And then she starts out taking shots at these folks, which I could feel. And, you know, the bottom line is, we want what's best for the community. And and we want to make sure that whatever we do, we do together. And today it felt like we were two pieces instead of one. You know, because we know we need to get the the committee back to start it. So then you can give us guidance on what direction we need to go. Our customers, our constituents deserve deserve better than what they're getting. But tonight was a little awkward for me in the nineteen years I've been here because we, for a while, we were pointing fingers. And the finger should point back at all of us. We need to change. We need to do something different. You know, so it, and Mayor, I get excited, and so do you. But both of us care. And and I want to make sure this community is better when we get out of office than when we got here. So I would encourage all of us that the next meeting, we we know what is on the agenda. We know who's going to speak and who's going to talk and who's going to represent BPU and who's going to represent the unified government. And then have them come back and report out to us what their fact-finding is. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echo everything that all my fellow colleagues have said. I keep joking and saying we're having meetings about meetings about meetings. You know, we've been at this for some time now, and we have yet to come to the table where we're actually talking about actual policies that can change. Debate those policies as two boards. But first, I, first, before I should start my comments. Andrew, I apologize for being ostracized for doing your job. That is not our duty to do. That is David's responsibility to do. So I would, from me, apologize to you for that. Continuing. It seems these meetings have turned into the US House congressional hearings. We're bashing each other, yelling at each other. That's DC. We're not DC. Let's stop acting like DC. We all, eleven of us, six of you, care about this community, or else we wouldn't be in these seats. So let's be the adults that we are and come to the table. And I'm going to say, let's stop acting like my eighth graders and stop pointing fingers at each other and saying, he did it, she did it. We're all adults. We're all, as I tell my eighth graders, we all have big brains. We can come together and do the work. Because this, this meetings, all these meetings are televised. The community can see the finger, the finger pointing, the bashing, the name-calling with each other. Media is seeing this and will report this. We have vacancies. Most, most people who are going to come work for us are going to want to see how the government operates. Now, when they start opening these meetings and seeing the contention, who's going to want to work in a place where we're finger-pointing, name-calling and bashing each other? We're all Wyandotte. All born and raised. Not everyone may not be born and raised, but the majority of us are born and raised here. We all care about the same people, the same mission. We all have the same vision. We may have different ways to get to that vision, but that's the beauty of being in government and a beauty of being an elected official, coming to the table and being at the table, not overarching the table and having a well-rounded conversation where we can all come together and have a strong voice for the community that we all love. And I know we can do it. Because again, we're adults, we got big brains. Thank you.
Thank you. I will be fairly brief because I am mindful that we do have a seven o'clock and we have folks waiting for us downstairs so that we can conduct business. Thank you all for coming. Ms. McCarthy, thank you for your presentation. Mr. Steiniger, thank you so much. I will echo a lot of what my colleagues have said. I I think when I had walked in this room and, I mean, we are sit pretty tight here. I thought we were really going to be able to knock out some hard questions. A little disappointed that that's not been the case, and it's been the third time. I I would ask a mayor that that when we are put together, that you're able to provide that information ahead of time. Because there were some things that I wanted to kind of ask you all in the presentation. And then you said, well, I didn't see it beforehand. And I'm like, well, it's just not fair for me to ask you questions if you weren't able to adequately prepare. There's just, the gotcha moments were past that. I'm past that. I I was, I was at a neighborhood meeting a few weeks, a few weekends ago, and and I just want to get towards solutions, realistic solutions. Speaking of solutions, we've talked about ideas on how to cut costs for customers, cut costs for constituents. I do think including our Public Works Department in that conversation with you all would be fairly interesting just to see from a function standpoint, since you all are both working on infrastructure, you all have water, we have wastewater. Again, I'm not an engineer, right? This is kind of above some of my expertise. But I do wonder if there are some cost savings available for us to combine functions and to save the taxpayer and the constituents dollars. And so I I would ask that. The other thing, and and my colleague, Chris Ramirez, didn't get at that, I didn't get at this now, but he did say this earlier, and I want to echo. I do think we should have some codified structure in the charter that does mandate these joint meetings and that does have a set agenda. That way, for future boards and for future commissions, it is not optional, right? That the community could look at the charter and say, hey, wait a minute. You all said every quarter you are going to meet. Where is your quarterly meeting, right? So that this stuff is mandated. And with that, I do think we might need to codify an agenda as well just to make sure that when we do meet, it is productive and we're able to do the work of the people. I did have some some other questions, but I I will reserve that for another time. Thank you all. And again, I I'm a little disappointed, but I'm hopeful that we can learn from this and and do better as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Commissioner Davis's point, I did ask Commissioner Bynum, because she said at that meeting that the time, the meeting, I brought up the idea, she would be on board. And I did ask her if she would work with me to work with legal to come up with that language of codifying those types of meetings. And then that's when I had reached out to Board Member Rose Mulvaney Henry to also have BPU Board members at that, be part of those discussions as well. And then that's when Bill had sent out, or Mr. Johnson, sorry, sent out the email to the board members inviting any of them to be also part of that conversation. It's important that we have it, you know? We can just go, we can easily just go in and just say, oh, we're required to have this and this. But I think there needs to be more conversation, more of how is things going to work with those type of boards? You know, how is the policy direction going to be had, taken? Will a policy go into effect if it's just passed by us, or does it need to be passed by both boards? Conversations need to be had to figure out how best that task force or what that joint commission looks like and how it operates. And so that's, I think, Commissioner Bynum for wanting to work on me with that because she's been working with the BPU for a long time now. The the bill separation and the pilot and all of that with Board Member Mulvaney Henry and Commissioner Hill in the past. So I know that once we get that, we should and hopefully be smooth sailing from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. In the interest of time, I know the General Manager and our Administrator were slated to speak. But hopefully, this was a good starting point for you all. The next meeting will allow you all to, at least, I'm sure you took notes, or you can get notes from several of us. As to the questions that were asked from Ms. McCarthy, I think the biggest thing was the pilot. Can that be taken off the bill? And can that be absorbed without raising rates? Based on the recommendations that were given, there were also questions as to pilot as far as separation and what that looks like on the bills, the unified government's portion, as well as BPU's portion. Is it something that is feasible for us to make it to where people aren't getting cut off because they didn't pay the unified government's pilot and fees? I don't know what that looks like, but that's a question that I don't know what that looks like, but that's a question that hopefully we can explore for the next meeting and have that as a main topic of discussion. Um, what was brought out, I know Commissioner Stikes has brought out and I, I didn't want to forget for the people of Edwardsville. Was the question about the pilot. And how that impacts the city of Edwardsville, um, and the people, um. That, uh, pay into that pilot. There were questions about the pension solvability, I think that was brought up, um, that's a great question, and debt. Um, how do we get to the massive debt that's there? And, and how do we start chipping away at that debt in a way that, uh, can bring relief, um, for our residents? Uh, but the biggest thing is, I personally see, and I can only speak for myself. Um, water and energy, um, um, are quality of life issues. Um, they're necessary, uh, to sustain a quality of life for our residents and a lot of people's minds have been told those are human rights. And when you talk about water. And energy, uh, to sustain a certain level of quality of life. And so I know that, uh. Ms. McCarthy, thank you again, she really posed some hard questions. Um, hopefully nobody got offended by those questions as well as their recommendations. Um, but that was just to get the conversation started. Um, so we could start, really start taking that deep dive that I, I believe that Commissioner, uh, Hill talked about. And finding the real solutions that, that I know our residents want us to start working towards, so. We'll schedule another meeting, um, probably here in short order, um, and probably have some consistent meetings. Until we can get some of these questions entered, answered, and if there's questions, board of public utilities that you have for the unified government, because. It's not just, I don't want you thinking all the fingers are pointed at you. The unified government has, has a vested interest and we've got responsibilities on that bill as well. So if you've got questions, concerns, we didn't get to that, we could probably take another three hours here having this conversation. But if you have questions or concerns or asks of the unified government, please get those to us so we can answer those questions as well. Um, because this is really a shared interest that could bring about shared success for our residents and so. Again, thank you all, uh, for your time, thank you all for everybody that was present today, thank you for the public, um, and these meetings will continue. I will now make a motion to adjourn.
Davis second.
Clark, roll call.
Roll call, Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Ramirez.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Kane. Lopez.
Aye.
Stikes.
Vote aye and I wish everybody to be safe on their way home, there's bad weather moving in, it's about an hour away, so be.
Davis.
Aye.
Bynum.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, have a good evening.